So tonight is the hearing for the proposed 2023 regional budget and five-year capital program and the final movers workshop for the new five-year strategic plan transit is the answer. The hearing will begin in just a minute, so please keep your microphones muted. If you're experiencing any technical difficulties, please let us know in the chat. Or by emailing communications at rta chicago dot org. You can see that email on the screen right now. Thank you. All right, Chairman, you're welcome to begin.
Thank you, Tina, and thanks for everyone that is joining us this afternoon. I want to welcome you to the Regional Transportation Authority's virtual public hearing for the proposed 2023 regional transit operating budget and capital program. And our final movers workshop for the regional transportation or transit strategic plan. My name is Kirk Dillard and I'm the chairman of the RTA's Board of Directors. I want to make everyone aware that this meeting, and I think you heard it a second ago, is being recorded and will be posted on the RTA's YouTube page when it is concluded. I'd ask everybody to mute themselves and stay on mute until you are invited to speak. Rest assured, we are eager to have an interactive meeting. And if you have questions or comments you'd like to share, you'll certainly be able to do so, and we welcome them. Please note, too, that closed captioning is available for all attendees. Please use the chat if you have any trouble accessing closed captioning. Some guidelines for this hearing, keep your audio on mute as much as possible to minimize background noise as this is being recorded. And if you, for any reason, experience difficulties, first use the chat box. And if you cannot access the chat, please email communications at rta chicago dot org. Communications at rta chicago, that's all one word, dot org. While everything discussed in this room will be recorded and considered formal public comment. Later in the hearing, we will welcome you to join optional breakout rooms to discuss specific questions with the RTA staff. These conversations in the breakout rooms will not be recorded as public comments. Before the presentation begins, I want to thank and acknowledge the other RTA board members who are with us and ask them to unmute themselves and introduce themselves, talk about what area you are appointed from when I call your name. Board members, if you could introduce yourselves, I'd appreciate it. Let's begin with Director Pat Carey.
Hello, Pat Carey. I joined the RTA board three and a half years ago, I believe, and represent Lake County. I live up in Grayslake and I look forward to hearing the discussion tonight.
Thanks, Director Carey, very much. Next, J D Ross from down in Will County, the Joliet area. J D?
Hi, J D Ross. I represent Will County and live in Joliet. Happy to have so many people join us.
Thanks, Director Ross. Director William Coulson, Bill Coulson. I know Bill was on, saw his face. We will come back to Bill if he wants to come back, but he was on earlier and it's supposed to be on the meeting. He represents suburban Cook County. And I don't know if we're joined yet by, but I believe she will attend part of the meeting. Director Liz Gorman, who was another appointee from South Suburban Cook. Director Gorman, have you joined us yet?
Yes, I'm your chairman. Thank you very much, Liz Gorman. Reside in Orland Park, Illinois and appointed by the Suburban Caucus of Cook County. And glad to be here. Thanks for everybody else for attending.
Thanks, Director Gorman. And really appreciate all of your attendance and perseverance. You are great, great diligent board members. I will now call this hearing officially to order and invite RTA Executive Director Leanne Redden to kick off our presentation on this year's proposed regional operating budget and capital program and the strategic plans. And let's take down the deck for a moment so that everybody can see our smiling faces. Leanne, it's all yours.
I am muted and talking. I should have this worked out, shouldn't I? But thank you, everyone. Thanks, Chairman Dillard. Welcome. As the chairman said, I'm Leanne Redden. I'm the Executive Director of the RTA. We're trying something a little bit new tonight. We are combining our financial strategic plan movers workshop with our traditional budgets, public hearing, and offering opportunities for to engage really in a deeper way with RTA staff as we get into this in some breakout rooms. So before we begin, I just want to first of all, express my gratitude to each of you for taking the time to join us. If this is your first meeting with us, we're excited that, you know, to introduce you to some of the work that we're doing. If you've been involved with us along the way, the development of the strategic plan, I again want to express my sincere thanks for the many hours that you have spent working to ensure that the future of our region's transit system is in on a good path. So last month, we released the proposed budget for our region's transit system for 2023. And earlier this week, we released the draft strategic plan titled Transit Is The Answer and release that for public comments. So tonight, we're going to talk about both. Then we will ask, we will take public comments as well as simultaneously open up some breakout rooms for anybody who's interested in having further discussion on any of these topics with RTA staff. I'm going to start with a few notes on the role and the purpose of the RTA and then turn it over to several of our staff members who can cover all those details. For those of you who aren't familiar with us, the Regional Transportation Authority is the local, the unit of local government charged with the regional financial oversight, funding and transit planning for the three service boards, the Chicago Transit Authority, or CTA, Metra, and Pace Bus and ADA Paratransit. The RTA itself is also responsible for approving and monitoring the regional five-year capital program, which supports expenditures to maintain and improve the region's extensive infrastructure and vehicle fleets. We serve the six counties in northeastern Illinois and are overseen by a 16-member Board of Directors. And we're pleased to have several of those members joining us tonight as you just were introduced. I'm now going to welcome some members of our staff to begin with an overview of the budget before presenting on the new draft strategic plan. So if we can bring back up the slide deck and I will turn that over.
Thank you, Leanne. Good afternoon, everyone. This is Bill Lackman, RTA's interim CFO, Treasurer and Budget Manager. Next slide, please. The proposed 2023 regional operating budget totals almost $3.6 million. This represents expense growth of 6% from the 2022 budget. As each of the service boards contends with the effects of inflation and continues to maintain, or in some cases, increase service levels to encourage further recovery of transit ridership. CTA's expenses comprise just over half of the regional operating budget, followed by Metra at 27%, Pace Suburban Service at 8%, Pace ADA Paratransit Service at 7%, and the RTA Agency at 1%. These expense shares are very similar to previous operating budgets. Next slide, please. CTA's proposed $1.8 billion budget maintains scheduled service with no fare increases and assumes ridership at 58% of pre-COVID levels. Expense drivers for CTA include labor, fuel, and additional security. Metra's proposed $980 million budget anticipates restoring service to near pre-pandemic levels and the continuation of the $100 super saver monthly pass. Metra's 2023 ridership is assumed at 47% of pre-COVID levels. Expense drivers for Metra include additional service, fuel, and contractual cost increases. Next slide, please. Pace's proposed $303 million suburban service budget makes permanent 89 of the route suspensions and reductions temporarily implemented at the onset of the pandemic. However, the budget also proposes new service with the expected launch of the Dempster Avenue Pulse Line and additional TNC or private ride hailing pilot projects. Price reductions for transfers and multi-day passes are planned for 2023 to encourage ridership, which is assumed at 51% of pre-COVID levels. Pace's proposed $226 million ADA paratransit budget assumes ridership at 95% of pre-COVID levels. Taxi access programs, sorry, taxi access program fares, which have been waived since May of 2020, will be reinstated at $2. Next slide, please. The proposed 2023 RTA agency budget totals $36.9 million. This amounts to a decrease of $9.4 million from the 2022 budget because of the every-other-year pattern of federal grants for 5310 projects that enhance mobility for seniors and individuals with disabilities. RTA's 2023 budget will focus on the implementation of the RTA strategic plan, about which you will hear later in the presentation. The agency budget comprises administrative expenses and expenses for providing important regional services for residents and riders, such as ADA paratransit certification, the reduced fare program, and the transit benefit program. Balanced with projected revenues, proposed expenses are supported by $36.3 million of RTA sales tax funding, an increase of 3% from the 2022 budget. Next slide, please. Finally, our transit systems operations continue to rely on $3.5 billion of much-needed federal relief funding provided to offset the ongoing ridership and fare revenue losses caused by the COVID-19 pandemic. By the end of 2022, the service boards and the RTA are expected to draw down about 47% of total federal COVID relief funding. The proposed 2023 regional budget and 2024-2025 financial plan anticipates the utilization of almost all of the remaining federal relief funding to support projected operating expenses. Depending on the RTA sales tax performance, relief funding will begin to exhaust in late 2025, with only a small amount expected to remain for 2026, just over the horizon of this year's budget and financial plan timeframe. As emphasized during the development of the RTA strategic plan, new revenue sources must be identified and implemented prior to the exhaustion of the federal relief funding in order to address a potential annual budget gap of more than $700 million, which is expected to begin in 2026. I will now turn over the presentation to Brian Lowenberg for a summary of the proposed capital program. Next slide, please.
Thank you, Bill. Good afternoon. I'm Brian Lowenberg, Manager of Capital Programs here at RGA. Next slide, please. The 2023 to 2027 capital program contains $5.7 billion in funding. 72% of funding comes from federal sources, which include both formula and discretionary funds. 20% comes from state funds that include pay-go from the motor fuel tax as well as state bonds. An additional 8% comes from a combination of CTA and RTA bonds. Other local funding sources shown on the slide make up less than 1% of available funds in the program. Next slide, please. The funding split by service board is 3.5 billion for CTA, or 60% of the program, 1.9 billion for Metra, or 33% of the program, and 382 million for Pace, or 7% of the program. Next slide, please. Next, let's discuss the top funded priority project by service board. The priority projects are the core capital initiatives that the service boards intend to undertake as funding becomes available. The slide shows the top three funded projects by service board, as well as the total funded amount and tenure needs by project. The full list of priority projects can be found in the budget book, which you can access from the homepage on the RTA website. CTA's top three capital initiatives include bond repayment, finance, and interest cost, the red line extension, and 7,000 series railcar purchase. CTA's tenure need is $23.8 billion, with $3.5 billion funded in the next five years. Metra's top three funded priorities are the fleet modernization plan, rail station improvements, and yard facility and equipment improvements. Metra's tenure need is $11.2 billion, with $1.9 billion funded in the five-year plan. Finally, Pace's top funded priorities include improved support facilities, fixed through electric buses, and pulse infrastructure. Pace's tenure need is $1.6 billion, with $382 million funded in the five-year program. Next slide, please. We wanted to touch on some key projects included in the capital program in three important areas that the regional transit system is focused on addressing. These focus areas include providing a more equitable transportation system, working to achieve full accessibility of the system, and transitioning to more sustainable forms of transit. The service boards have put significant emphasis on investing in more equitable transit system. For CTA, equity projects include the red line extension funded with $340 million, which will fund design and engineering, as well as bus slow zone eliminations on Chicago Avenue, 79th Street, and Western Avenue funded with $15 million. For Metra, equity priorities include the new Auburn Park Station, which provides service in an underserved area and is funded with $32 million, and the Harvey Transportation Center, which is a joint project between Metra and Pace to improve the bus and rail facilities and is funded with $21 million. Finally, for Pace, funded equity projects include the 95th Street Line, Pulse Corridor, which will provide faster bus service along this corridor, and is funded with $21 million, and the purchase of new paratransit vehicles funded with $19 million. Next slide, please. Another regional emphasis with significant funding in the 2023 to 2027 capital program is the continued effort to make the system fully accessible. CTA's accessibility program includes the all-stations accessibility program, which focuses on making stations fully vertically accessible around the system and is funded with $110 million in the program, as well as the Brown Line Western Station reconstruction, which will bring the station up to code according to ADA guidelines and is funded with $13 million. Metra's accessibility enhancements include the purchase of new railcars, which will be fully wheelchair accessible, funded with $274 million, plus the Van Buren Street Station rehab, which will make this station fully accessible with $16 million in the current program. Finally, Pace's accessibility project includes purchase of community and on-demand vehicles that offer improved ADA access funded with $5 million. Next slide, please. Finally, the region continues to make major strides in funding cleaner transportation in the 2023 to 2027 capital program, with major investments in several projects. CTA has programmed $144 million for the purchase of articulated electric buses and charging equipment, as well as $115 million to electrify Chicago Garage. Metra is funding new technologies, including zero-emission locomotives at $36 million and zero-emission train sets at $20 million. Pace is proceeding with electrification of their service. There's planned investment of $96 million at the North Division Garage, as well as $94 million at the Southwest Division Garage. Now I'll turn it over to my colleague Jessica Hector-Zoo to share details on the new five-year strategic plan.
Good afternoon, hi, everybody. I am Jessica Hector-Zoo, I'm the Director of Plan here at RTA. And for the last 18 months, we have been working with stakeholders across the region to develop a plan for the future of transit. The plan was just released publicly on Monday of this weekend and is now available for public call through January 9th. Today, my colleague Peter Kirsten and I are going to give you a very brief overview of what's in the plan. If, I know many of you on this call are part of our movers group, so if you've participated in development of the plan or followed along and all throughout the way, you've probably seen a lot of this, but I do encourage you to bear with us. We will highlight some new elements, including some shared activities and for 2023. Go ahead to the next slide. From the outset of this process, really, really knew that this process had to be very different from past efforts. It was clear that we really needed to take a big tent approach, which meant broadening our audience and providing some new ways to engage. We also really wanted to create some feedback loops between RTA and our stakeholders, riders, and members of the public throughout the plan development process, rather than waiting until the end of the process to ask for feedback.
I think Jessica might have dropped off. Peter Kirsten, do you mind picking us up where she left off?
Yeah, absolutely.
Tina, I'm actually back. Sorry, go ahead. Sure, sorry about that. I think I had a lapse in action. I have internet issues today. So as I was saying, rather than waiting, we wanted to create a feedback between RT and our stakeholders so that we didn't wait until the end of the process to get feedback. This approach really allowed us to listen early on and to co-create some elements together and eventually coalesce around a vision and agenda for advocacy and action. So the engagement process was really quite extensive. It began last fall with 20 guest bloggers and speakers at the RTA board meetings. We had over 2,600 survey responses on three different surveys that we put out over 18 months. We held 100, more than 100 hours of stakeholder meetings. We had eight public workshops and events across all six counties, and we had over 20,000 people following us on social media. So that work was really important. It continues today with this public hearing and a new way of doing this. It also will continue into next year as we build a coalition to advance our agenda for advocacy and action. So the pictures you see on the screen and throughout the presentation are of actual people we met at events throughout the region who provided their input on what they'd like to see from the transit system. And I really like to thank all of you, all of our stakeholders and the public for taking the time to participate along the way and share your insights and suggestions with us. The plan really was truly co-created such that it isn't just ours, but it really belongs to all of us. It really is just the first step of a long process ahead, so we look forward to working with all of you. We encourage you to stay engaged and help us implement the plan. I and many others will be happy to talk with you in the breakout rooms after, toward the end of the meeting. But for now, I'll hand it over to my colleague Peter to go through the substance of the plan.
Thank you, Jessica. My name is Peter Kirsten. I'm the Principal Planner with RTA Strategic Planning, and go ahead and advance the slides. So as Jessica was mentioning, through this new process and with these new voices, we developed the following vision. Our vision is safe, reliable, accessible public transportation that connects people to opportunity, advances equity, and combats climate change. Next slide. Alongside this vision are three principles that have and will continue to guide our work, their equity, stewardship, and committed to change. The vision and principles have been the central criteria guiding all plan development for both RTA staff and all of the different stakeholders, partners, and riders that we get engaged along the way. Next slide. So as you heard in the first part of this presentation, and as we look toward the future, we see that the current funding model is unsustainable. We estimate that in 2026, we could have a regional transit budget deficit more than $730 million annually, which amounts to about 20% of our total operating budget. The reason for this deficit is twofold. First, expenses are higher. In the near term, inflation is certainly going to be a challenge, but labor is the dominant expense category. Attracting and retaining talent, which is a serious and ongoing challenge for the transit industry, requires competitive compensation and benefits. The second reason for the deficit is that fewer people are riding the system than did in 2019. We anticipate that there will be lasting changes to the ways that people commute, such that we don't expect ridership to return to 2019 levels in 2026 or really anytime over the next decade. Note that this is not unique to our region. Peer regions and transit agencies throughout the country are facing proportionately similar deficits. This is a major funding crisis that we are facing and need to work together to address. Next slide. An investment in transit is an investment in our region. In just 2022 alone, the service provided by CTA, Metra, and Pace is estimated to deliver $17.2 billion in regional benefits. Put another way, for every dollar that we invest in transit through the operating and capital budgets, the residents and communities of our region receive $3.86 in overall benefits. Put another way still, there is a high cost of failing to adequately fund our system, and that cost is borne by the region. Further transit impact analysis can be found beginning on page 23 of the draft and in related documents linked on the plan website. Next slide. Historically, transit agencies have two levers to address an operating deficit. They can raise fares or they can cut service. Let us be clear here. It is impossible for the RTA and service boards to solve the funding cliff we are facing by raising fares and cutting service alone. Fare increases of the magnitude needed to fill the budget cap, doubling what they are today, would drive down ridership and negate additional revenue brought in by higher fares. Additionally, they'd render the system unaffordable for many. Throughout this process, we asked people how the region should respond to a potential future budget deficit by scaling back service or pursuing additional funding for transit. Survey respondents overwhelmingly indicated the RTA should pursue additional funding to maintain our system and to see increased investment to make transit safer, more reliable, and accessible to everyone, rather than cutting service. Next slide. Knowing that a future fiscal cliff is looming, RTA and the service boards are working hard to avert these financial challenges and evolve toward a more sustainable funding structure. 27 federal, state, and local revenue policies to support the Chicago regional transit system were identified, analyzed, and evaluated. The figure shown at right reflects the top 11 potential revenue source. They are ordered in estimated annual yield. Our analysis also demonstrates that no single funding solution would be able to generate sufficient revenue alone to avert the projected fiscal cliff of $730 million in 2026. Or that's both for the existing system, let alone fund any major improvements or expansions to the system that the public wants to see. The region will need to explore options in these areas and pursue additional state and local funding mechanisms. More on potential funding solutions begin on page 18 of the draft. Next slide. Capital funding was the focus of the last regional transit strategic plan, Invest in Transit. And while our region's capital investment needs remain substantial, there has been progress with the passage of Rebuild Illinois and the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act signed into law in 2021, as well as administrative improvements at the RTA and service boards to improve transparency and speed up delivery. As well, this plan will introduce 12 new evaluation themes and metrics to be incorporated into the five-year capital program, beginning with the 2024 budget cycle, so next year. Projects will be evaluated on themes including racial equity and mobility justice, economic development, climate impact, state of good repair, and other themes. Additional details on capital planning can be found on page 25 of the draft plan. Next slide. To advance this plan's vision, we are moving forward with an agenda for advocacy and action. If you've been involved with this process up to now, you've likely heard of this list or even contributed to the creation of this list. There's a lot here. It's an ambitious agenda to accomplish, not as the RTA alone, but as a coalition. Advocacy items are shown here and include longer-term substantive changes to how our regional transit system works and largely include changes that the RTA and service boards need support from stakeholders to accomplish. This includes securing increased funding for transit operations, developing a budget less reliant on rider fares, but instead focused on expanding access to opportunity, building a coalition around the value transit brings to the Chicago region, supporting communities' efforts to improve the area around transit stations and stops, and to pursue equitable transit-oriented development, engaging with communities in an inclusive and transparent way about how transit dollars are spent in the Chicago region, securing increased funding for transit infrastructure, and partnering with roadway agencies to build more transit-friendly streets and advance bus rapid transit. Next slide. Action items are shown here and have the potential to be more immediate. They may not be easy, but will help address changing and unmet needs of riders in the communities we serve. These are things RTA and the service boards can take the lead to implement with the support of our stakeholders. This includes making the system safer, more secure for everyone, using new funding as a catalyst to create a fully accessible transit system, providing providing more accurate, real-time travel information, making paying for transit more seamless and affordable, accelerating the transition to near-zero emission regional system, assessing the capital program in new ways that include racial equity and mobility justice, and adapting bus and rail service to meet the changing needs of riders. Next slide. Advancing the agenda for advocacy and action starts now. RTA is committing to a set of shared regional activities to begin implementing in 2023. These are divided into three categories: transit funding, rider experience and thriving communities. In a moment, we will open up breakout rooms divided by these three categories, where staff will be able to discuss details and answer questions you may have. The slide you're seeing here shows transit funding. So in 2023, we will take affirmative steps forward to secure increased funding for transit operations and make the system less reliant upon fare revenue. We'll do this through executing a broad public outreach campaign. We'll do this through collaborating with regional partners to identify funding options and develop revenue proposals. And we will also obtain continued recovery, recovery ratio relief from the Illinois Legislature while developing a permanent funding structural reform. Next slide. Rider experience. In 2023, we will deliver a set of new regional transit initiatives that will make the system better for riders. This will include convening a region-wide cross-sector safety and security summit to facilitate information sharing and explore holistic solutions to the challenges affecting transit. We'll seek funding to pilot an expanded regional free or reduced fare program available to people experiencing low incomes, and we'll commission an independent review of the accessibility and quality of rider communication, signage and information sharing across and between agencies. Next slide. Thriving communities. In 2023, we will collaboratively begin development of three regional action plans. The first is a blueprint for improved accessibility. The second is a transit climate action plan. And the third is a transit-friendly communities policy and updating of setting the stage for transit to set standards for communities that host transit services. Again, the breakout rooms will be divided by these three themes: transit funding, rider experience and thriving communities. We will open those up in a moment, but before we do that, I think we have some final instructions and I will hand it back to Leanne. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. I know we've presented you with a lot of information tonight, and if you're interested in working with us to help achieve a sustainable funding model for transit and really build a better system for everyone who relies on it, then we're asking you to consider joining our coalition. The Agenda for Advocacy and Action in this plan really lays out a path to position the system for long-term success by seeking new funding, making improvements for riders and supporting communities working to increase transit access. We recognize that we can't do this alone, and many of the advocacy and action items in this plan are not under the control of the RTA, CTA, Metro or PACE. Leadership from a diverse group of elected officials, community leaders is needed really for us to achieve this meaningful change. Everything you will need to sign up and stay engaged with us is at rtachicago.org, and I invite you to visit the site, read the plan, sign up for the coalition and stay tuned, stay connected with us. So next slide, please. As a reminder, there are two documents now open for public comment. The public comment period for the first, for this proposed regional operating budget and five-year capital program is open through December fifteen, the day of our board meeting and vote and the day they will vote on the budget. Those wishing to attend the December board meeting will find a link to register and join our website starting about a week before that meeting. The public comment period for the plan is open until January nine. You can see on the slide here how to provide comments for each, and you can find similar instructions on our website. Now, the RTA's Director of Communications, Tina Facet Smith, will invite those of you who want to make comments to speak. So I will turn it back to Tina.
Thanks, Leanne. Hello, my name's Tina Facet Smith and I'm the RTA's Director of Communications. We're going to begin public comment. We have gotten many requests to make public comments, so please keep yourself on mute until I call your name. If you want to stay in this room and provide a reported public comment, please put your name in the chat if you have not already notified us by email or by chat. First, we'll ask attendees who notified us by email to speak, then we'll call on those in the order that they put their name in the chat. If you can't put your name in the chat or prefer not to, please wait until everyone else has spoken and then raise your virtual hand and we will go ahead and take your comment then. When I call on you, you're invited to unmute, enable your camera if you wish, and provide a comment of five minutes or less. We have a lot of folks who want to talk, so we will be limiting folks to five minutes. If you'd like to join a breakout room, which we're going to open in just a moment, those, the comments and discussions you have in those breakout rooms do not count as public comment. So we invite you to do that and go talk to our staff, but if you want to make a public comment and have it recorded, you need to come back to this room and do that. Once in a breakout, you'll be able to switch to other breakouts and come back to this room, so don't worry about that. Please use the chat if you have questions, regardless of which room you're in. There are facilitators in every spot that can answer your question. And I'm going to begin with those who emailed us and indicated that they would like to speak. There are a lot of folks here, so I'm going to call the name. And if the person is here, please unmute and speak, and if not, I'll move to the next name. The first name is Garland Armstrong. Garland, are you here? Okay, if Garland shows up, we'll let him speak in a moment. I'm going to move to the next name. The next name is Bruce Mainzer. Bruce, are you here?
Yes, I'm here. Thank you. My name is Bruce Mainzer, and I served on the RTA Task Force this past summer to develop a strategic plan. I am a retired mass transit executive, having worked for the RTA for the first year it was in existence in 1976, and also I've worked for the Illinois Department of Transportation. I'm currently Vice Chair of the Chicago Chapter of the Climate Reality Project. Chicago Transit Agencies are familiar with the Climate Reality Project as we have been advocating for replacing fossil fuel buses for a few years now. Climate Reality appreciates the PACE Board's turnaround on electrification. PACE's FY23 Five-Year Capital Plan contrasts sharply with PACE's first draft of Driving Innovation Strategic Plan in May of '21, which stated they would not be purchasing any electric buses in the short term and instead follow the CTA's lead. It's fortunate that they did not follow CTA's lead, and instead, PACE has now fully adopted electric buses, and they will be receiving twenty buses next year. Meanwhile, CTA is seriously lagging almost all other major transit systems in ordering and retrofitting its garages for electric buses. CTA is continuing to order diesel buses, five hundred this year. CTA President Dorval Carter promised at the August board meeting that he would ask the staff to revisit all the assumptions of the electrification plan, but to date, such a review has not taken place. The Federal Transit Administration recently made $1.6 billion available to the nation's transit agencies to ramp up bus electrification. Los Angeles got $104 million. Boston's MBTA and New York each received $116 million to buy electric buses. CTA, on the other hand, asked for just $29 million to buy a mere ten electric buses and upgrade a garage. We are also disappointed with the RTA and the failure of the RTA to be an effective oversight agency on the plans of the CTA. The RTA Strategic Planning Document is silent on the very different directions PACE and CTA are going, while PACE is spending two-thirds of its capital budget, or an impressive $250 million over the next five years to purchase electric buses and electrify two garages. CTA is only spending $270 million on electrification. What is even more surprising is that PACE is spending more on electrifying its garages in its five-year plans than CTA. Another point of comparison is with Boston's MBTA FY23 Five-Year Capital Plan, which calls for spending over $550 million on electric buses and garage electrification in Boston, or twice what CTA is spending in the five-year plan. And the Boston fleet is forty percent smaller than the CTA's bus fleet. There is something very wrong with CTA's failure to ask for more funds, which were available to retrofit garages and ramp up its electric bus purchases. The climate crisis is urgent, and we need operators with large fleets like the CTA to take this crisis seriously. CTA's bus fleet currently causes three percent of all greenhouse gases emitted by on-road vehicles within the city of Chicago, according to Climate Reality Chicago's chapter's estimates using the City of Chicago's Greenhouse Gas Inventory Report. Ordering five hundred diesel buses will commit CTA to continuing to contribute to the climate crisis well after other transit systems have successfully transitioned to electric service. RTA's mission is not to paper over the various differences in operating and development policies of its service boards. Transit operators know that the additional capital monies available for electrification will save significant maintenance and fuel costs over diesel bus operations. These five hundred diesel buses will cause CTA to spend an additional $15 to $20 million in annual operating costs compared to if they were five hundred electric buses. RTA needs to exercise its authority here to keep CTA on track and force the changes that will benefit all Chicagoans and the planet. Thank you.
Thank you for the comment. I noticed that the, I think that there has been some trouble in the chat. I think I have everyone's name, but the next person I'm going to call on is Pam Tate. Pam Tate, are you here? If so, unmute and make your comment.
Yeah, I'm here. My name is Pamela Tate, and I also represent the Climate Reality Project's Chicago Metro Chapter. And I have spoken to you before on several occasions and to the CTA Board and staff. So I'm sure you know that I'm here to say again, as emphatically as I can, that I think it's a huge mistake for the RTA to allow the CTA to purchase these five hundred diesel buses that it's proposing. Why are you letting this happen? Given the RTA's stated commitment to climate-smart approaches in your strategic plan, why? I participated in one of the working groups to create this RTA strategic plan and help to formulate the vision. And I'm happy to see that it includes combating climate change. But how does allowing CTA to move ahead with purchasing fossil fuel buses, five hundred of them? How does that help to combat climate change? I'm not finished reading the new strategic plan yet that came out yesterday, but I'm partway in. And it does say that RTA will be working with the service boards to, quote, "build a regional transit climate action plan" that, and I'm not saying it all, but that charts a course to a move towards zero emissions for transit operations. I ask you, does moving forward and towards zero emissions include in your thinking allowing these diesel buses, five hundred more of them, to be on Chicago's streets for another twelve to fourteen years, taking us all the way to 2040 or after? I just do not see how the vision in your strategic plan in any way relates to what the CTA wants to do with this budget. As Bruce said, on the other hand, it's clear that PACE is taking this move towards zero emissions seriously. All you have to do is compare the proposed budgets, as Bruce did. They're a much smaller agency, and yet they're going to be spending almost as much on bus electrification as the CTA. In fact, two-thirds of PACE's entire five-year capital budget will be spent on electrification. I can't, I can't point out the stark differences in a clearer way. CTA plans to have only twenty-five electric buses on the road in 2023. That's 1.3% of its fleet. Their planned expenditures over the next five years are literally ridiculously low by any measure. And certainly, they don't reflect the RTA's vision about combating climate change. So I'm asking you to exercise your authority here and say no to this CTA budget plan. The climate crisis is too urgent, it is too immediate, to allow CTA to continue to plod along in its transition to a zero emissions fleet. 2040 is too late. We can do better. So thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you for your comment. The next person who I have is John Cavallunas. John, are you here? And if so, unmute and make your comment.
Yes, I'm here. I also am a member of the Climate Reality Project Metro Chapter. I have made my opinion known at November RTA presentation in McHenry County and at prior CTA board meetings. I care very much about our collective health and our natural environment and believe we have the technology to improve them both. We just need the political will and the commitment. I've been a lifelong regular user of the Metro and CTA transit systems and an occasional PACE user. It heartens me that PACE has pivoted to electrification, as you've mentioned, and seen the opportunity for operating and fuel expense savings along with the responsibility to improve their environmental footprint. Nevertheless, I do wish they would reconsider their compressed natural gas bus purchase plans and rebid the willing garage as an all-electric facility, given the damaging properties of the greenhouse gas methane. However, my main point of contention today on the budgets is, as mentioned before, the additional five hundred diesel buses programmed by the CTA for purchase over the next three years, which is almost one-third of their fleet. That is an irresponsible decision in my view, given the urgency of the climate crisis and the fact that other major cities, LA, New York and Boston, are moving quickly to electrify. The CTA states in charging form that one of the barriers is the lack of e-bus manufacturing capacity and the availability of semiconductor chips. This faces all cities and their transit systems, but has not stopped other major cities from ordering large amounts of electric buses now. Why are you letting other cities jump ahead and receive electric buses that could be coming here? Especially with the new federal funding that is available, the CTA should be stepping right up for this funding. Fortunately, there is substantial money. This new federal money for electric buffers and infrastructure can help us meet these earlier deadlines. We gave, the FTA gave out $180 million in 2021 and recently over $1.6 billion for 2022 funding, a level that should continue for four more years. Transit agencies in Boston and New York receive far more money than Chicago in this round. The RTA should be directing the CTA to ask for much more money to speed up garage retrofits and electric bus purchases in this five-year plan, so that we don't miss out on this fiscal opportunity. Please, RTA, take your oversight role to be more than just a balanced budget, but a qualitative oversight role that takes into account public health and the health of our environment. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Yeah, hello.
I'm sorry.
Could you, excuse me, could you please move me to one of the working groups?
I'm going to ask the host to help do that.
Okay, all right.
Which working group would you, which one of the breakout rooms would you like to join?
The finance group.
Okay, we'll work on that. I'm going to ask Howard Ehrman if he is here, and if so, to unmute and make a public comment.
Yeah, good afternoon. My name is Dr. Howard Ehrman. I'm the former Assistant Health Commissioner of the City of Chicago for seven years and the co-founder of the Little Village Environmental Justice Organization. I want to thank the groups who've commented on electric buses, and I also want I want to thank the groups who've commented on electric buses, and I also want to clarify certain comments in the chat. As we all know, the federal government, as well as the local governments, divides budget into two groups primarily. One are capital expenses, and the other one are operating expenses. There's no long- or short-term solution to the problems that are faced by RTA and the agencies that oversee until the federal government restores operating expenses to the federal budget, which were eliminated in January of nineteen ninety-seven. So just to clarify that, not one single cent goes to any of the agencies anywhere in the country for operating expenses. The question of electrification really comes under primarily the question of capital expenses, although it has a relationship to who's working on the buses. I'm asking, along with the Climate Reality Project, I'm representing here the People's Response Network. So I want to thank Climate Reality Project for all the work they've put in before us to basically use your legal authority as the RTA to overrule immediately at your next board meeting, if that's today or whenever, the CTA. You have to stop this purchase of five hundred diesel buses and move towards much greater electrification. I'm sure that the Biden administration would be happy to renegotiate the pitiful amount that was asked by the CTA for the electrification of its garages, other electrification infrastructures needed, and the, the whole lack of adequate numbers of electric buses. This is directly related to the question of equity that you've talked explicitly about in this meeting before we started commenting. If you want to really be equitable, then please look at the maps developed by the Natural Resources Defense Council and other organizations about where is the greatest environmental burden in the city of Chicago, the county of Cook in Illinois. It's clearly in low-income communities of color. Who takes the bus because they have to take the bus, not because it's optional? The people who take the bus are from the same low-income communities of color. The overall rate of people who don't have cars in the city of Chicago, according to the U.S. Census Bureau, the twenty-twenty census is approximately thirty percent. But in neighborhoods like Englewood, Little Village, and other African-American Latino neighborhoods, it's over fifty percent. People stand waiting for a bus, inhaling diesel fumes from trucks, pollution from cars, and then lots of pollution from diesel buses. I'm an occupational medicine physician. I have worked with bus drivers for decades. I've actually been asked to be a consultant for certain things that the Amalgamated Transit Worker Union have done internationally. And no matter what you do, those diesel fumes get inside the buses to the bus drivers and the bus riders, causing a decrease in their year, in basically the years that they're alive, and an increase in their morbidity while they're alive with various lung diseases and other diseases that are exacerbated or caused by particulate matter, ten, and particularly particulate matter, two point five. This ends up costing the economy of the Chicago metropolitan area much greater than the purchase of buses. The purchase of electric buses have dramatically decreased in terms of capital cost over the last twenty years as more and more of them are made in the United States, and you probably know that the largest manufacturer of electric school buses is a few miles down the road in Joliet. We need to make those buses for CTA and PACE here in Chicago or nearby. And as I said before, you really have to go back and force CTA to change the amount that it asks for and to get more electrification, more electric buses for both the CTA and for PACE. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. The next name we have is John Labai. If you're present, please unmute and make your comment.
Am I unmuted? Hello, am I unmuted?
We can hear you. Please go ahead.
Okay, great. I'd like to thank Chairman Dillard and the other board members of the RTA to allow me, as just a retiree who is a weekly writer on the CTA, to make the following comments. And the comments are, of course, centered on five hundred buses, diesel buses. CTA is planning on spending along with the overhaul, I understand, is eight hundred and eighty existing diesel buses. I'd like to make three points. Point number one, this might be the greatest missed opportunity in the history of Chicago public transit. President Biden signed the Inflation Reduction Act on August sixteenth, more than three hundred and fifty billion dollars for climate initiatives. Why isn't the CTA at the table asking for a larger chunk of this dollar for the entire electrification of its fleet and electrification of all of its garages? How are we going to meet the president's stated goal of limiting CO2 admissions by fifty percent by twenty twenty when our own transit agencies, such as the CTA, are not taking advantage of the money that is there? In addition, President Biden made the observation that when we talk about climate change, we also should be talking about jobs, 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 and not pursuing an aggressive electrification program. I think the CTA is shortchanging the city on jobs that would be available to those electrifying the garages. But also, in a more economic development sense, how are we as a city going to have entrepreneurs, startup companies, innovators come to the city when they see our, our public transit fleet as being diesels running around? Clearly, a nineteenth-century technology not made for a twenty-first-century city. Point number two, and it's been stated before, public health. Twenty-four billion tons annually of CO2 in the air in ninety-seven, thirty-two billion in oh-nine, thirty-five billion in twenty-fifteen, and the amount keeps on going up and up and up and up. The cost for the respiratory issues that accrue because of all the CO2 and particulate matter that is going to be happening because of these diesel buses is, I would say, a calculus that is not in any of the discussions that I see that are happening regarding the transit. And let's, and let's be clear. I don't, I mean, I think the CTA will probably say that these are clean diesel buses. Let's, let's be fair, there's no such thing as a clean diesel engine. They're all going to have particulate matter spewing out into the atmosphere. Third point, why we can't do an aggressive electrification of the fleet? I believe the CTA is saying that, number one, there are not sufficient e-bus manufacturers, and there's a lack of availability of semiconductors. I would say that that is perhaps an excuse that is cast us by. If you read the Wall Street Journal, recently, there were reports that the chip industry is actually has excess capacity now and is, is, is well under its way to, to, to meet the worldwide demands for, for chips. And as for, for the bus manufacturers, well, if you put the, the money out there, I'm, I'm pretty sure you'll have manufacturers coming out that will be able to do it. The, the other, I think, argument is that, well, the, the, the CTA's amount of, of, of of pollution or CO2 knocks and particulate matter in the atmosphere is not significant enough, and that's somebody else's problem. Well, if, if we take that kind of stance, no one will do anything to address climate change because if someone's else, somebody else somebody else contributes more to the CO2 in the atmosphere than, than our little neck of the woods. As a major transit agency in a major city, they, CTA, should be taking the lead in, in, in helping all of us in our, also address the climate change. So in summation, I would strongly encourage the RTA to use its financial oversight, provided under Senate Bill thirty-five fifty, to prevent a huge financial mistake that will affect the city and lost economic opportunities, degrade public health, and really not help into addressing what President Biden is trying to do in reducing CO2 emissions nationally. I, I thank you for letting me make my comments.
Thank you for the comment. The next person that we have on this list is Lolly Watt. If you're here, go ahead and unmute and make your
Hi. Hi, this is Lolly Watt, and I don't represent any organization. I just represent myself. And this is my first engagement with the RTA. I have to say, I joined the meeting tonight because I heard about these five hundred diesel buses, and I was appalled. I live in Wicker Park, steps from the intersection of North and Damon and Milwaukee. Steps from the CTA Blue Line Damon Station, you can probably hear the train in the background. I see the train right out of my window here. I love transit. I use transit all the time. But I also live in an apartment where I get all the stuff coming out of the buses, coming off the train, coming off the tracks, and I'm breathing this stuff all the time. So I was kind of amazed when I saw this vision statement that said, so we talked about stewardship as one of the things we're doing. We also talked earlier in the presentation about how these plans were put together with all kinds of public input. I would like to kind of get a better sense of understanding of it's one thing to hear inputs, it's another thing to implement input. So it sounds like there was an awful lot of input, but I don't understand how the outcome was we are still buying five hundred diesel buses. That just doesn't seem right to me. I'd like to understand how projects are evaluated. So what exactly, what factors? I'm a retired CPA, so I do understand numbers, and I did quite a bit of planning work in my professional life. And so I'd love to understand what was done to evaluate options and what kind of numbers were put in for the impact on the environment, or whether because those are not paid directly by the RTA, they were just conveniently not put into the consideration. Because I have a hard time understanding that if someone actually did a thoughtful analysis of full costs, including costs on health and vulnerable communities, we could come up with five hundred so-called clean diesel buses as the answer, sitting in twenty twenty-two and looking forward. So I'm, I'm asking that as just a resident of Chicago, I think we deserve better, and the RTA Board, I'm hoping you will take your responsibilities seriously and make sure that we don't end up buying five hundred diesel buses. Just having twenty-five electric buses in the CTA in a capital investment plan is ludicrous. I'm sorry. And I'm a huge transit supporter, but we have to do better than this. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Sorry for the earlier disruption, and I want to quickly recognize that two more of our Board of Directors have joined, Director Gavitt, Gavitt, and Director Groban. Welcome to the meeting. We're going to move along swiftly. The next person is Molly Mahoney. Molly, if you're here, please unmute and make your comment.
Hi, everyone. My name is Molly Mahoney, and I am asking RTA to use their influence to stop the planned purchase of the five hundred diesel buses, as well as the overhaul of close to nine hundred existing diesel buses. This is a travesty to the city of Chicago and the climate crisis as a whole. I'm a suburban mother of three and can tell you that this purchase will affect my kids, your kids, and the future of Chicago. The buses will be on the roads for at least twelve more years after they're delivered. That's fifty thousand metric tons of CO2 emissions annually, the equivalent of nineteen thousand passenger cars. To the members of the RTA Board, you are supposed to provide oversight for the transit agencies. Why not actually lead when it comes to the need for rapid electrification? You have the power to direct the CTA to revise its plan, stand up for the health of our Chicagoland region. PACE, a much smaller suburban transit agency, is planning on spending about that much on electric electrification over the next five years as CTA. That is disgraceful. CTA, you're behind Los Angeles and New York in your commitment to electrify your fleet as well. I know CTA might defend the decision with, well, the new CTA diesel buses are more fuel-efficient and meet the latest EPA emissions guidance compared to the older diesel buses. This is greenwashing. Electric buses emit no CO2 nitrous oxide in particulate matter. And then the easy fallback, oh, they're too expensive. There is substantial new federal money available, as we discussed, and what Chicago has gotten is ludicrous. One point six billion was given in two thousand twenty-two, and that number is expected for four more years. I will end with this. If you think your actions here today don't matter, you are wrong. Every report coming out of the IPCC, COP twenty-seven, and others prove that you are, that we are woefully behind in meeting our emissions reduction targets. And the consequences are dire. Rapid electrification of CTA's fleet will make a difference. Other agencies, cities, and citizens of Chicago will see that the RTA is leading on climate action, and that is something to be proud of. Stop the purchase of these diesel buses. The time for climate action is now.
Thank you for your comment. I'm going to move to names that we got in the chat. I'm going to go back quickly to, and see if Garland Armstrong has joined us. If so, Garland, unmute and make your comment.
Yes, can you hear me?
I can hear you, Garland. We have five minutes.
How you doing, Tina? How you doing, Chairman Dillard and all the RTA Board Directors? Can you hear me?
We can hear you. We're doing well.
Alright, this is Garland Armstrong, and my wife Heather Armstrong, formerly of Displayz Illinois, now living in Des Moines, Iowa. And I was listening in, and me and my wife is totally outrageous, especially with the CTA buses, that we are deeply concerned about that, and the citizens of the Chicagoland area, especially in the suburbs of Chicago and the city itself, with, especially for the ADA who takes the CTA buses individually. And when they hear about that, that, they're going to say, where is the electric buses concerning especially clean, efficient, and also electrification, like PACE is doing an awesome job of it? Because people with disabilities, when they take the CTA buses, they're going to have like asthma problems and even extreme CLPD problems. So that's going to be a major issue with the CTA buses when they come out with those electric, with those diesel buses, because they don't understand that individuals with disabilities who ride it, especially have extreme asthma, breathing problems, and health problems, they need to look into some research of it to find out how we can get, like PACE is doing a great job, and they're not catching up like that one caller says, especially in other cities are doing well, are catching up. So I think it's time now, CTA needs to use some references from other agencies on how they're doing it so they can come up with some creative ideas, but they figured they're not going to be able to do it right away. So I think the time is right now, and RTA, you should help out with CTA, go to other cities, like, either like New York or LA to find out how they're coming up with that and use some references of that so that they could be well-prepared for it down the road, because I think somehow CTA doesn't understand how others are going to do it, and they could get some help from other states too, or other cities. So it's time now to see it firsthand that they should do it well-prepared and how they're doing it so they can come up with their own program of it. But they never thought about that. So the time right now is to get together and go to other cities and see how they're doing it and get help from there so that they could say, I could, we could, we could get some references from, from them so we could get ready for ours, and so the city of Chicago could catch up and the suburban part could catch up with other cities and suburban areas that they can finally do it. Because now is the time, and like we said, this is the twenty-first century, and twenty fifty will be a couple of years around, so I think it's time for us to get everything all together. And with the budget, we're deeply concerned about that, especially with the twenty twenty-six losing shortfall of seven hundred and thirty million dollars. I think you should probably ask, you should probably ask the the state lawmakers, along with the federal lawmakers, how and about like using like corporate tax or hotel taxes on that since you, you, you need to use that so you could get that, so you could keep it going. Because I think like in other cities, they might use something like that to make sure that they won't have a shortfall too. So you should find out about maybe corporate or hotel taxes. So That's our decision and I'll find out if my wife has something else to say. She doesn't, but that's, that's both of our major decisions. So I think time now is you should check on that and see what you can think of.
We appreciate your comment Garland. I inadvertently skipped, thank you. I inadvertently skipped Tom Coleman who had email or emailed us previous to this meeting and asked to speak. Tom, if you're here, go ahead and unmute and make your comment.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm Tom Coleman and I'm the chairperson for the Chicago Metro Chapter of Climate Reality Project. I'm impressed with much of the RTA's um action plans in the, in the act, Action Five Plans. In the Transit Is the Answer document. However, in my view, as other people have said. There is real concern about the details in the budget relative to purchase of additional diesel buses. Um, we believe that nothing less than the health of the people of Chicagoland is at stake. Um, the issue of emissions is a major issue, not only because diesel buses emit pollution. But separate from that, they also emit greenhouse gases which are building up seriously in the atmosphere, which is affecting our climate. So incremental improvement with better buses, as mentioned in your plans, isn't the answer because you see. The US needs to cut emissions now more dramatically because of decades of inaction in the past. We see pace bus moving towards zero emissions more quickly. We like that and we think it's a good plan. They're spending a lot of money at pace to do this. In fact, I think about the same as CTA in general, which is a much larger organization. So as Pam Tate said, two thirds of Pace's five-year capital budget is electrification. CTS, on the other hand, is planning only 25 buses, which is a small portion of the plan. So we believe the CTA should move more quickly. Uh, and will be negatively judged in the future for decisions if it makes the 500 diesel bus decision today. It's not just going to be tomorrow, but over the next five or 10 years, that decision will be a mistake. Because you see, these diesel buses will be on the road for 12 to 15 years. So as mentioned before, the CTS appears to be an outlier versus what's going on in other major metropolitan areas. And so we believe that uh now's the time to take advantage of federal tax credits. And strategically move your goal from 2040 to 2033 or, or sooner. And certainly take advantage of federal tax credits to move forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Now I will move to those who have put their name in the chat. I, the first name I have is Bruce. Um, I want to make sure that that's, if that's the same Bruce M. that spoke before, you've already spoken or if it's a different Bruce M. You can come off mute and speak. Okay, I think that was the same Bruce we had before. Adam K. is next. If you are here, go ahead and unmute yourself and make your comment.
This is Adam Kerman. Uh, I'm a member of the uh Citizens Advisory Board, uh, both of the regional and, and for pace. Uh, I would like to ask uh the Regional Transportation Authority to show leadership on. Uh, on solving the last mile issue. Uh, we tend to have uh both rail stations and uh. Um, uh, rail stations and uh trunk line bus routes uh serve small areas within um. Uh, with, within about a three quarter mile walk. But they don't serve large portions of uh the metropolitan area, particularly, particularly in the suburbs. Uh, Pace has just gone through uh a major uh service cut. Uh, in both shuttle and feeder routes. But uh, the truth of the matter is uh, we all expected that this would come because the economic shutdown. Uh, for so long simply changed the nature of transit. Um, so that's out with the old. What we need at this point is in with the new. Uh, we need RTA to sponsor uh both shuttle and feeder services. In uh portions of the metropolitan area. So that everybody has the opportunity to get to the nearest uh. Either rail station or, or major uh or major trunk line, uh major trunk line bus service. Uh, this will help RTA politically because this means that. Far more of the suburban area will be accessible to transit than is the case right now. Uh, right now with significant portions of suburban area having no transit service whatsoever. That's significant numbers of uh. Illinois voters who think they don't personally benefit from transit. So uh, uh, this should be treated as an interagency matter since uh feeder and shuttle services. Tend to involve both pace and metro or pace and CTA rapid transit. And uh, funding like this, funding for programs like this should be on the uh regional budget. Um, I would also like to comment that over the long run, uh. It would behoove um uh the budget for ADA. Which uh, as we saw from the numbers that Peter posted earlier, is uh almost as high as the suburban bus budget. If the issue of capital cost of contracting were dealt with. That is, the city carriers are expected to supply the bus fleet. Which is paid for with operating dollars, except they're counted as capital dollars for federal purposes. And uh, I can't really explain it, but uh, I obviously other people in RTA staff can. It is a practical matter for the long run. Uh, providing paratransit service in the city uh would be more competitive. Uh, there would be the option of smaller carriers uh who uh. Um, who wouldn't be expected to provide their own fleet if the fleet of paratransit vehicles were owned. Um, uh, were owned as, as, were owned by uh, by the taxpayers and were on the regional budget. Um, I realize this has implications in the long run for. How the RTA capital monies are distributed among the service boards. As long as you're lobbying the state legislature. Uh, this is something that, uh, this is something that should be fixed um as, as a long room, uh, as, as a long room solution. Um, I have some additional comments. Uh, I'll uh probably have to write them up an email and uh, thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. The next person we have from the chat to speak is Aisha A. Go ahead and unmute and make your comment.
Great, thank you. Uh, my name is Aisha Akhtar and I uh am from the Epilepsy Foundation of Greater Chicago. Um, I'm not going to comment on the 500 buses. I'm actually. Really wanting to talk about some of the public health outcomes for people with invisible disabilities. These are the types of people that. We serve at our foundation. Uh, we talk about transit being the answer and so. When we think about public health, transit is one of the public health outcomes. And so that's something that I want to make sure is part of the conversation as we move forward. And the foundation would love to be able to be a partner with the RTA to make sure that we have seizure safe training. For all staff so that people with any sort of invisibility disability. Can feel seen and heard as they come on the train, take a bus, call for paratransit. Uh, not feel penalized because they don't live in a paratransit area, but that we all work together because for some people. With epilepsy especially, they can't drive. And sometimes people, I know a lot of people on this call have said that they've chosen public transit as the way. I choose public transit as well. But I had the option to drive, but for some people, they don't have the option. So let's try to, to, to fix a problem for, for people with invisible disabilities. That is more equitable, that also responds to Healthy Chicago 2025. Social determinants of health, transit being one of those indicators. Um, and I want to just make sure that we're all on the same page and again, that foundation can be a partner. In providing these best practices and providing these seizure safe trainings. So it's just a very short comment I wanted to make, but in a positive public health space and I hope we can work together in the future. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. The next person I have from the chat is Leah M. If you're here, oh yes, please go ahead and unmute and make your comment. Thank you.
Hi, so I am currently in Atlanta, just for a school trip and whatnot. And I took Marta from the airport to downtown and then through to North Bucket. Uh, when I got out there, I took a bus and I rode around and stuff like that, offered about $9 single day pass stuff, kind of like what the CTA would do. One thing that did stand out was is that everything that I relied on Google Maps for. And just any general transit sense was on time. Everything that it said, when it said that the buses been coming one to the stop, it came at one. There was no stand for butts, it came. Same for it. It was no slower, it was no faster, it was on time. There was no ghost buses, there was no ghost trains, there was nothing like that. When I visited Chicago again, however. I pulled, I flew into air, ran down into the terminal, said train was leaving every eight minutes, I had believed that. And it took 20 minutes for our train to leave for whatever reason. And then when I finally left, we hit multiple slow zones on the way to Jefferson Park. And I thought I wasn't going to make my transfer to the UP Northwest Line heading out to the suburbs. So I don't know what to believe in terms of either the train tracker or any part of just. Driver competence and just ghost trains in general because it's not being funded enough clearly. Train services are being slowed down by slow zones. I mean, I've already seen it from, from the previous reports. And the worst part about it is, is that, I mean, I shouldn't have to rely on calling a Lyft or Uber depending if I'm going to make it or not. So I think that's one thing I could just be made more reliable within the Chicago area alone. And then the other thing is, is that the current order of battery electric locomotives for the Rock Island line from. The La Salle Street Terminal to Blue Island, um, seems like a little bit of a waste of money considering the fact that. That Metro already owns the line already and has really considered any other alternatives, at least on surface, it didn't seem like it. So it does seem a little bit off that electrification and I don't mean just battery electric, I mean like electrification with either third rail or overhead cane wire. Wasn't actually considered for any parts of procurement. Um, it just seems kind of outlandish because I mean, the Metro Electric District already exists. That's Metro owned tracks, that's something that metric can easily replicate on other lines. And stuff like Rock Island that already exists, that has the same exact terminal hub as part of the, at least as part of the Metro Electric line. But it just seems a little bit off to me that something hasn't been expanded just outside of the Metro Electric District. But as I said, that's about it with the electric train specifically, but with the SD70 purchase. For the NSF lines like that. It could really be done better. I think just resulting to just SD70s. And not looking elsewhere to other manufacturers like Siemens with their charter, the SC44 would also be a good option. Um, although I do know that it doesn't use an EMD prime mover, which could be part of the issues since the effects apparently know how to work on them. So I don't know what the whole backup of it is, but it seems like we could be using something as either tier four or higher. That wouldn't require this type of chicanery in a way to get to at least more equitable transit. Or something that would be more reliable or say it should be more efficient. It just seemed like a huge mystery and, and the name of, of making the whole part of mention more accessible. Um, that serving peak would be a good start. Um, so getting down to half hour headways or better would be nice all day, not just serving peak and. Going back and forth on that, it's just not worth it. Um, but that's one thing I would like to see definitely in the traffic proposal for that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. The next commenter I have from the chat box is Tracy M. Tracy M., if you're here, go ahead and unmute and make your comment.
Hi, uh, my name is Tracy McFadden. Uh, I am a retired airline captain and a veteran of the United States Air Force. Uh, I currently serve as the Vice President of the Fox Valley Electric Auto Association. And I'm also a member of Chicago's Climate Reality Project and I wish to thank the RTA for allowing me to speak today. Uh, you will vote on December 15th on a budget and a five-year plan that shows the CTA. Is far behind where it should be, as mentioned many times here, on electrifying buses. And so I'm asking that you reject the CTA's plan to order 500 new diesel buses and send it back for revision. I feel this is a giant step backwards in technology. Uh, this will be costly in dollar terms as it costs an electric bus over a lifespan is much lower due to lower maintenance. And uh, fueling or electricity cost. In addition, this commitment to diesel buses has more obvious costs to our citizens' health. Due to poor air quality as well as the effect on climate change. I'm kind of reminded uh years ago, uh, many years ago. Uh, I was buying a video camera for my family and, and this was the beginning of the, the digital video camera age. But after study, I decided to buy a VHS video camera. So I told my wife uh of what I was doing, what I was buying and she said, oh, you're going to go backwards in technology? Ah, okay, uh, that hurt. So I ended up purchasing a digital video camera. Now the VHF might have been a little cheaper in the short run, but would have cost me a lot more later as it would have been a bad financial decision. I think the parallel here is clear. Purchasing new as well as updating old diesel buses is not only short sighted, but is clearly a step backwards. The justification that new diesel buses will be better compared with old diesel buses. Doesn't make a lot of sense. The new buses are still huge emitters of toxins. We have not solved the problem. To say the new buses meet the EPA minimum, and I'm going to repeat, repeat the word minimum here. Uh, is still going down the same polluting path. And I ask, uh, doesn't it sound strange when you hear the idea? Let's order some more diesel buses to solve our diesel bus polluting problem. Sounds kind of ludicrous, doesn't it? So I believe the CTA needs to take action now to speed up the change to an all-electric bus fleet. And two things need to be considered. First and foremost is money. As I mentioned, electric buses are cheaper to maintain, which saves the taxpayers' money and this is very important. And second, on top of this, there's a substantial new federal money available for electric buses. The Federal Transit Authority recently appropriated uh 1.66 billion for fiscal year 2022. Uh, funding and this level is going to continue, anticipate to continue for another four years. So the money is there. And timing is of the essence. Chicago is lagging behind trans, other transit operators in other major cities. Who have set goals and targets to go all-electric much sooner than the CTA. Los Angeles and New York have committed to electrify their entire fleets by 2030. We can do this. Uh, let's jump to the head of the line and put Chicago first because I, I love Chicago and I know everybody on this Zoom loves Chicago. It's a great city and uh, so we can do this. We can get that federal money and we can complete. Uh, the electric transition by 2033 instead of 2040. So after all, do we want to purchase 500 new VHS tape players? Seriously? I don't think so. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for your comment. The next person I have from the chat, chat is Adrian L. Adrian L., if you're still here, go ahead and unmute and make your comment.
Sure. Hi, yes, I'm on the call. Uh, yeah, I, I live in Palos Park. Uh, southwest suburbs of Chicago and I live right across the street from the Metro Station. Uh, this is the Southwest Service Line. And. I have a house here. And I ride the Metro. And what I want to do is I want to comment briefly on the plan. In regards to uh two specific areas of the plan that I've read here, your draft plan. There's this advocacy area four and advocacy area seven. Both are very good. I appreciate uh the effort that has gone into this plan. And let me just say as well, uh, I'm a US Navy retired Civil Engineer Corps Lieutenant. I spent 20 years in the United States Navy uh working in infrastructure. And this is the Civil Engineer Corps of the United States Navy. In addition to that, I'm a licensed professional civil engineer. And I have a familiarity with knowledge of infrastructure and roadways and transportation as well as structural expertise. So, uh, what I want to say is, uh, personally, I, what I want to do is, is share some stories and strongly advocate what is, what I'm seeing here in advocacy area four and advocacy area seven. Improve the area around transit stations. So we have the Palos Park Metro uh, rail station here. It's about five hundred feet from my house. It's across the street from my house. And we bought this house here due to its proximity to the rail station because we, we value the Metro, uh, rail system and use it and wanted to live in close proximity to the Metro Rail Station. For obvious reasons, I don't need to drive a car to get to the rail station. I don't have to park at the rail station. I can simply walk to the rail station. Now, since we moved in here, what I realized is there's a fundamental, something fundamentally flawed with the pedestrian infrastructure here, or I should say lack of pedestrian, safe pedestrian infrastructure. So currently where we live, uh, where, where, where we are, okay, there's this road called Southwest Highway. This is Illinois seven. It's owned by IDOT. And it's basically runs along the side of my house. And it's between me and the Metro Station. This is a four-lane state road. And this is a residential portion of that road. The speed limit here is forty miles an hour. And shortly after moving in, we, we realized our, uh, we were naive to presume that the speed limit actually meant something. And that forty miles an hour was something that people would respect because there's homes that line the street here. Uh, and, uh, I'm not talking about people's backyards, you know, facing the road. I'm talking about people's front yards. Uh, people's front yards face the roadway, uh, the mail, the mail carrier stops, you know, every, every, whatever it is, fifty feet between the lots that line the street here. There's no sidewalks. Uh, I recognize it's the suburbs and there's a lot of places there are no sidewalks, but the difference between this part of the suburbs and other parts of the suburbs is the proximity to the rail station. So this is where we start to talk about this transit oriented development and these other buzzwords that I've been catching on to is that these things are significantly important and it's, it's past time to take these things seriously. So what I'm, my comments here are to request and, uh, advocate, you know, the highest levels of importance be assigned to the efforts to improve the transit oriented development, uh, or, or, um, infrastructure that, uh, serves not vehicles, but pedestrians and bicycles uh, in proximity to these metro stations. So the good news is, is we're seeing a lot of, a lot of really interesting things starting to develop with the, uh, with the infrastructure bill and the pedestrian safety crisis that's presenting itself. And I'm starting to get, see a lot of, um, uh, promising, promising developments that suggest that these problems are going to be addressed. Uh, and I, what I want to do with my comment is advocate that this is hugely important. I mean, we, we bought this house and I live five hundred feet away from this metro station, yet it is unsafe for me to get to the metro station because there is no crosswalk, there are no sidewalks. And there are people who speed between fifty and seventy miles an hour. And the last thing I would say is the plan is great. Okay. I, I, what, what people who ride the train need is they need for Metro to, to own this, you know? And they say, it says they want to assist the village and everything, and that's nice, but you know, Metro needs to be the strongest advocate for its riders. And there's, I would say that there's a liability with the safety issue. If I can't get to the, if I can't get to the train station without dying. I mean, there's, there's been ten accidents in front of my house in the last twelve months. It's not safe for me to get to the metro station. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. The next person we have from the chat is Steve DeRose. Steve, if you're here, you can go ahead and unmute and make your comment. Ask you to limit it to five minutes. Thanks. Okay, I'll move to the next person, Kristin Y. Kristin Y., if you're here, go ahead and unmute yourself and make your comment.
Yes. Hi. Thank you so much for your time and for listening and
Thank you.
through all of the hackers. I am with Climate Reality, um, as well as climate designers and women in climate action. Uh, I'm also a mother of two children who will be, um, eighteen by the time those five hundred diesel buses are purchased. Um, so I just wanted to take the time to say that America's, um, second largest public transportation system should set an example and not be part of the contradiction of corporate entities that pledge climate targets on one hand, but then do not follow through with their budgets and actions on the other. People are watching your actions, which are louder than your words. We do need rapid electrification. So please say no to allowing CTA to buy more buses. And thank you again.
Thank you, Kristin. Uh, the next person we have from the chat is Courtney C. Courtney C., uh, if you are here, go ahead and unmute and make your comment.
Hi, my name is Courtney Cubs. I am one of the co-founders of Better Street Chicago. Um, I would highly encourage the RTA to move congestion pricing to the top of their list of ways that we can shore up funding for transit. Um, it doesn't seem to get a lot of attention in conversations about uh, funding transit in the region, and I think it will be one of the ways that we can, um, move people out of their private vehicles onto transit. As many people in the chat have stated, uh, improving service, so improving frequency. I'm someone who wants to see people wait ten minutes or less for the next bus. I think every thirty minutes is like, I can't even contemplate that, especially in the wintertime. Who wants to wait twenty, thirty minutes for the next bus or the next train? I also want to encourage the RTA to consider curb management. I saw a small blurb about, um, working with cities and municipalities in terms of land use. I, uh, the curb management should be part of the conversation. Bus only lane, signal priority, et cetera. Um, I'll say more in my emailed comments. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Courtney. I want to apologize, uh, for the disruptions that we've experienced and thank everyone for their patience with it. Um, public hearings are, are, uh, always a little, um, you know, public. Um, the next person that we have, uh, is Fabio G. Uh, if you're still here, go ahead and unmute and, uh, make your comment. Hey, the next person that I have from the chat is Charles P. Charles P., if you're here, go ahead and unmute and make your comment.
Did you call me?
I did.
Yeah. Uh, my name is Charles Paydock, and I'm Secretary of Citizens Taking Action for Transit. First of all, I'd like to compliment RTA on the two publications, very and very informative on the current state of affairs. I also liked the website in particular, the feature on the lower right-hand quarter when you ask for comments from the public. That is a welcome opportunity. By the way, in my entire life, I've never been given five minutes to address a public transport transit board. You're quite generous. I read, the thing that concerned us was the fact that in twenty twenty-six, transit funding will be in a used to term crisis situation. Uh, and we'll be confronted with a situation of keeping our fleets operational at all. Our primary concern is service. Now we follow service adjustments. There's been significant decrease in off-peak services in late evening, at night, no twenty-four hour services. That has always been our primary concern and remains it here. We really do not, and just, uh, look forward to the cuts in those respects that would result in, um, any transit funding, uh, difficulties. I particularly want to thank RTA for page twenty of the five-year plan. We're often inquired on how public transit is funded. And this is an excellent summary. We will do everything on our part as an organization and as individuals to contact the legislative bodies to see to it that adequate funding is, is accorded to it. And I believe those changes in page twenty merit implementation. I think they were investing in, uh, right now, infrastructure towards electric cars. And if I'm correct, we're still at the twenty eighty old formula. And I really never really receptive to that. I accept that as the thing we should do. Nevertheless, it is routes and schedules that concern us. Whether that bus is a few minutes late or early, or whatever, it is a far different situation from no bus at all. This is what makes people seek alternative modes of transportation. If transportation, of course, has to be reliable of all matters, that is the number one criteria. Reliability. On, and that above all things is the priority and the focus of it. If you don't accomplish that, you're not operating what is called a service. But thank the RTA and the board and the staff for putting together what I, I found that a rather affirmative publication. The five-year plan, much different than any of the others I've read over the years. It gives a good sense of direction. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. The next person we have from the chat is David P. David P., if you're here, go ahead and unmute and make your comment.
Hi, everybody. My name is David Poe. I'm the Director of Planning at the Active Transportation Alliance. Uh, thank you all for everything you've done to develop this important plan. Um, we are very much excited to work with you uh, to implement some of the issues that you raise, uh, and the solutions. Um, as you know, at the passage of the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, recently, there is an unprecedented amount of federal funding, uh, available for transit right now. And programs administered by Federal Highway Administration make up the most significant portion of surface transportation funding and, uh, IIJA. Uh, most of this funding is flexible and can be spent on public transportation projects as well as pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure, which, you know, is uh, integral to, uh, creating, uh, transit oriented communities. Last month, Colorado's transportation planning agencies officially updated their plans and project lists to meet the state DOT's new greenhouse gas reduction targets. Uh, in Illinois, a few months ago, IDOT, RTA, and CMAP voted to approve plans to add over three hundred new lane miles to our region's roadways. In Colorado, the new plans spend significantly less money on highway expansions and redirect billions of dollars toward multimodal projects like transit, biking, and walking infrastructure to make these low-carbon transportation options more convenient, safe, and affordable. Our state should follow Colorado's lead. Our region should follow Colorado's lead. Instead, we are perpetuating the climate and safety crises that, um, younger generations will inherit. Uh, on a related note, CTA is not planning for any bus rapid transit routes right now that could receive significant funding from the FTA. Our FTA region is itching for more BRT, and our leaders are failing its transit riders by not leveraging funding for faster bus service. As the RTA communicate significant opportunities available for BRT funding in our region, not only to CTA and the other service boards, but to its, uh, to all of your constituents. Uh, I also asked that you work with CMAP and IDOT and other road agencies and municipalities in the state of Illinois to implement or push forward a greenhouse gas reduction, uh, target similar to that in Colorado's so that uh, the RTA, CMAP, and IDOT are rubber stamping hundreds of miles of destruction road, destructive roadway projects across our region that are perpetuating, as I mentioned earlier, the safety crisis in Illinois. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. The next name we have in the chat is Michael L. Michael L., if you're here, go ahead and unmute and make your comment.
Hi there. I'm Michael Zikatos. I'm the Transportation Program Manager with the Village of Schaumburg. Um, I just want to first thank, um, the board for the opportunity to discuss the budget and the plan. Um, we're large supporters of transportation in the village. Um, we use it to leverage a great deal of the economic development and land use work that's going on here. Uh, and particularly the redevelopment of the, uh, ninety North District, which is built on the premise of a BRT station. So I'll echo some of the sentiments earlier about supporting BRT and, uh, building the infrastructure and the will uh, behind bringing more of these services and existing investments like our Northwest Transportation Center. Uh, we've been facing a number of challenges over the last few years in operating our dial-a-ride service, uh, with the ongoing national, uh, driver shortage and, uh, obviously increased budget pressures that everyone is feeling. Uh, we do appreciate the support, uh, that we do get from Pace, uh, to operate our service. It's quite unique and robust in the region. Um, serving almost fifty thousand riders a year. So we do, like I said, we appreciate that ongoing support. Anything that could be done to help, uh, keep these services running, um, you know, at a clock and, and handle the cost increases that we're receiving, but um, and we look forward to, to providing formal comments on the plan, uh, but I just wanted to mention um, our specific support, uh, for some of the strategies down the road that will help, uh, some of our economic development projects thrive. Thank you.
Thank you for the comment. That's the last name that I have, uh, from the chat, but if you, uh, put your name in the chat and I missed it, uh, go ahead and raise your hand. Uh, and I, or put your name again in the chat and I will call on you. Okay, I want to make sure that there's no one who's called in who wants to speak. If you've called in and you're unable to raise your hand or put your name in the chat, you can go ahead and unmute and make your comment. Hi. Hi.
Could you switch me back to the, um, financing breakout group?
Sure. Uh, if the host could please, uh, put the person in the breakout room, the finance breakout room. Is there anyone else who would like to make a public comment of five minutes or less? Okay, um, this meeting is open until six, so we've got nine more minutes. Um, I want to thank everyone who has come. Uh, I thank everyone who's taken the time to make comments. We will stay, uh, uh, here in case anyone does decide to make a comment or comes from a breakout room and wants to make a comment. I'm going to ask, uh, we have a, a soundless video, uh, that shows some of the quotes we got from people during our period of engagement in creating transit is the answer. Um, if, uh, you could bring that video up while we wait. I want to quickly check Karen, uh, if D, if you would like to make a comment, just one moment, we'll stop the video. If you take it down and you can make your comment. Karen, go ahead and unmute it.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay. Um, thank you for allowing this, uh, citizen input. Um, my name is Karen Dabrowski. I've enjoyed hearing all these comments. My comments are similar, obviously, because I'm at the end of the rope, but this is such an important issue uh, that it bears repeating. I'm a member of the Citizens Climate Lobby, um, McHenry County, Illinois. It's a national and worldwide organization trying to create the political will for a livable planet. I have a Ventra Senior Pass and I've been taking Metro and CTA, um, a couple of times weekly for about ten years. Uh, you can probably guess I'm a grandma going from the suburbs to the city. There's so many worthwhile environmental causes to be involved with, but if we can't get this climate issue under control, absolutely nothing else matters. So that's why I'm here to question the wisdom of adding five hundred diesel buses and overhauling eight hundred and eighty existing buses to create more. to create more of the same problem. As mentioned several times, PACE, a much smaller agency, will be spending almost the same amount for the next five years on electrification. PACE has about 1,000 fewer buses. Yes, there are such, there is such a thing as clean diesel, better than the old diesel buses. But exhaust from clean diesel engines can still cause serious illness, especially in children and the elderly. Even short-term exposure can worsen allergies and cause symptoms of asthma and bronchitis. I have family and grandkids in Chicago. I hate to think of these buses still adding to the CO2 levels until the year 2040. So we need to decarbonize now. Look at how much worse our climate situation has become in the last 20 years. Fast forward to 2040, it's not going to improve. New York, LA, Boston are way ahead of Chicago in terms of electrification of their transit system. So as everyone has said, Chicago really cannot wait. Time is important. So please reconsider this very bad plan. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. I haven't received any other names. I want to make sure no one else wants to comment. We have about six minutes left in the meeting. I want to thank everyone again for coming and for commenting. I'll pause just a moment to see if anyone else adds their name to the chat or raises a hand. Okay, I'll ask you to bring the video back up and we will keep this meeting open until six o'clock. All right, I'm going to ask to take the video down. And we will close the breakout rooms and I will turn it over to you, Chairman Dillard. Thanks again to everyone for their participation.
Thank you, Tina. And it's six o'clock and this has been a tremendous hearing over the last couple hours. I do want to let our electrification bus friends know that in our last meeting, we asked, based probably upon one of your letters to the editor, that it just run the day before. We asked President Dorval Carter of the CTA extensive questions about bus electrification. And one of the things that has not been pointed out is he said, nobody's better at accessing federal money than the CTA. And it's a multi-year period. And judge them and look at it over the next couple of years, just not the first bite of the apple. But it's, you've been heard loud and clear. And I just want to let you know that, you know, we have discussed it at length with the CTA and will continue. So with that, I do want to thank everyone that participated, your comments. And I know that of the other board members are well taken. And transit continues to be the economic equalizer, economic engine, and the best environmental friend that Chicagoland has. So with that, Tina, I want to thank everybody again. Check our RTA website for information and updates and we are adjourned. Thank you very much.